Tuesday, August 10, 2021, and we're in the North High School boardroom. In attendance is myself, Paula Johnson. Ms. Oden?
Yes, here.
Ms. Brown is unavailable. Also in attendance, we have Mr. Donovan, Mr. Smith, Ms. Ogara, and John, how do you pronounce your name again?
Finakara.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first order of business tonight is contracts with CTE.
Okay, so we have the CTE, we have the director, Dottie Ogara, and John Finakara. So the first item they're going to speak to is the plasma table.
John is our manufacturing instructor, and he's best suited to explain the plasma table to you. We're upgrading the advanced manufacturing program, and this is integral to the students' learning.
Well, first thing I'm going to take care of is, this is actually a water jet table. The plasma table is also on the board, but the water jet table is the big-ticket item. The plasma table is the small one. I just want to make sure that that gets settled. The water jet table is for cutting material. Our board has recommended it for the fact that it's very diverse, so we can cut, you know, basically any kind of material we want within reason. Metal, ceramic, tile, glass, stone, plastics, we can even cut, well, if we set it up properly, food if we wanted to. The reason we're going after the water jet table is we can actually diversify many of the projects that we use in advanced manufacturing. We have CNC machines that we're also going to upkeep, but that's later date anyways. This is our first step to actually bring us up to 21st century and be giving this, able to give the skills to the students that they're going to be using in the industry. Manufacturing is a very broad industry, so we're trying to hit as many of the competencies we can for industry, for the students. We're going to have welding, we're going to have machining, we're going to have the building with the CNC. As far as the plasma table, fabrication, so there's a whole bunch of the gamut. We're hoping that we find niches for each one of the students, so we can actually direct them in the field where they need to go and where they're going to be best suited, instead of just niching them right away. I think that might help. If there are any questions, because I know $80,000 is a lot of money.
I have one. How many students do you project will be in this course or using this machine?
So within the next, you know, once we have the program fully running, that should be, what, 18 times 3, right? We're maxing out at 18. So that'll be 36, 44?
54.
54, there it is. I know, I'm a teacher, and I had to do math in my head. So 54 students is where we should go until we have to diversify and end up with more teachers, much like automotive has two teachers. So is that where you want to go?
Well, I don't know. I'm just wondering how many students are going to benefit from this new equipment?
Oh, yeah, 54 students once we're running normally.
Okay.
And then we can go further if we end up with more teachers.
Okay. And will, will what they produce be any finished product?
That is the whole goal, is to actually have finished products. And students, products that students can actually be proud of. In the past, you make them make a widget, and the widget just looks like a piece of metal or anything like that, and it doesn't really give them a sense of accomplishment. This, we're trying to get them to go through a whole gamut and actually end up with a finished product that they can actually distribute. We're trying to take on some other jobs from the outside, so they can actually be part of industry also. Right now, we have, in fact, I've been training all week for, we're doing what's called the switch car. And it's an electric vehicle that students are actually going to build in manufacturing. We're going to be looking at all the pieces of this and how it was manufactured, how we can improve it, how can we manufacture it quickly, reduce its cost to manufacture it, so you can actually increase profit margin, produce more product, and basically be successful in a business. You know, the end is, you want to make money, and you want to do as little work as possible, but still have a quality product, and that's what we're after.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that help?
That helped. And in this program, do we see more students that want to get this skill for when they graduate versus going on to college?
This program is affiliated with the New Hampshire Youth Apprentice Program, and this program places students in the workplace. They do internships, and the students, if they display need, can be awarded up to $2,000 for college tuition, and they buy their tools for them. So in this first year of the program, students are actually learning the manufacturing process, which is repetitive, and it gives them more skills, and they're highly sought after in the workplace. So it's a distinct advantage to our students. Plus, the program is articulated with Manchester Community College. This Manchester is not in a show. And they receive three college credits.
Nice. Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
What year do they take this, as seniors, juniors?
They can take it as a sophomore.
Sophomore.
And they can finish it as a junior. Next year, we're going to introduce Megatronics to show the automation piece of manufacturing. And in their senior year, John is a senior coming up this year, is doing an extended learning opportunity, and I believe he's staying with John in the class to help the other students. And this is typical of the programs, where the students help the other students, so they're really getting three years of the program by starting in 10th grade.
Wow, that's impressive. Any more questions? I think this sounds, this is nice to see that we're training our students to go out into the workplace, and even to a point that they could become entrepreneurs on these skills, because I've always said not every student wants to go on to secondary and to learn, but they want to go out in the workplace. And it's good that we give them skills, especially manufacturing-type skills, because we should be bringing more of this back to this country rather than depending on foreign, you know? So, okay. So, and you're looking at the global max for $83,150?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for global max not to exceed $83,150. Funding will be coming from the Vocational Education Capital Trust Fund, number 7076.
Second?
Second. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll put that in the book later.
I hope we can get invited to see this work.
Yes. We'd give you a ride in the electric car.
Okay.
Depends on who's driving.
What's the Pro AV systems? Is this?
As this year has been a difficult year for the teachers and students, and electronics being so important, we'd like to install wireless TVs in the CTE rooms, because it gives the opportunity for students to actually see hands-on what an instructor is doing. For example, in automotive, when the instructor is changing oil or changing brakes, it's very difficult for the entire class to see what is going on. So if we have this technology in our high-skilled classrooms, we can project it on the screen, and all of the students can see what the instructor is demonstrating at the same time, and they have the ability to ask questions, rather than 18 students all standing next to the instructor trying to just see what the instructor is demonstrating.
Any questions, Ms. Oden?
Yeah, I do. I see seven. Is this, you're going to have seven classrooms that have this?
This will be at North, and then the other classrooms are at South. So if you go to the next page.
So seven classrooms at each high school?
Well, there'd be seven programs. There's seven that will be getting these at South, at North, excuse me, and eight at South, because we have the programs at both schools. So when they put this out to bid, they just, that's on page three, South is on page three. And then the installation is $4,125, because we contract with Pro AV. And this will be a 60-inch screen mounted on the wall, and there will be wireless connection, and there'll be a desktop computer, which we already have, to put on the shelf under the TV, so the teachers can access it. Right now, we don't have the technology to use laptops, and we're just using the desktop.
I guess what I'd like to ask, is there some way you can have it in maybe four rooms, and people can use it cooperatively?
Well, the problem is, each program is so unique. For instance, in this building, culinary can't go down to use culinary skills in automotive, as automotive can't come to culinary and cosmetology, and there's biotechnology. They're all so unique, they need their own systems. And this will be coming from the Perkins Grant.
I'm thinking of TV, having a TV in the house. You watch a movie, somebody else will watch a different movie at a different time. Are these, these machines specific to each program?
To each program.
They're different. The machine is different?
The machine is the same, but it's mounted on the wall. It's not movable, it's mounted on the wall. So we can't, so the students can't move from automotive to culinary to, to have their class, so each class needs to have their own.
I, I guess, you know, I look at it very much like, rather than to have eight at South, have four, and one group uses that, that room where it's set up for something, and then somebody else comes into it. It seems extravagant to me, but...
But it's a different lab, so this would be mounted in the automotive room. It will be mounted in culinary. It'll be mounted in biotechnology. So we can't move the classes, because they're particular to those rooms. Those are their labs.
So are they working while they're watching this TV?
They, for instance, in automotive, they're getting the instruction that would be very difficult for them to see, and it is very difficult. The teacher has a portable one down there right now in automotive that could get tipped over very easily, and they're trying to all see what the instructor is doing, and it's very difficult, because they're all huddled around. So it's really a safety issue as well. And the same thing in biotechnology, same thing in culinary. You have all these students trying to see exactly what the instructor is demonstrating, and they can't, they can't, the proximity isn't available.
Can I help?
Yeah, absolutely. John's done it before.
To give you a better scenario, doing a brake job on a car, I'm also one of the automotive instructors. I have 18 students around me. My head barely fits in the wheel well, and so when the students can't see, I have to step back, and I have to have one student at a time come in, see what I'm doing, and they can't do everything at the same time. By having, and I've thought of this for years, having an area where the students can see what I'm doing right now, and then I can step back and have a student do, you know, another student work on it, we can all see what's going on. So when the next student comes in, he's seen it in live right now in front of us, and we can also record too, but we'll talk about them another time, we can actually keep the students involved. Right now, you have, I'm working, three students can see, the other ones are either standing if they're really engaged, and if not, you start losing students, because you're working on this one tire. Same thing in bio, you know, technology. When we're doing demonstration, you know, you can't do it 18 times, you know, all the time. You want everybody to see what's going on. Also, we don't want everybody squished together. You know, what we're having right now is we're supposed to be keeping six feet, you know, for a little while there. You know, at least we can keep the three feet or keep the distance, and they can see what's going on, and then we can rotate people in. It's going to be beneficial for the students and better engagement, especially with the distances we have.
So I guess what I'm hearing is rather interactive, almost?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
Thank you.
No problem.
So I was busy writing, as, so how many TVs are we getting between all of them, the total?
We're getting seven for North, and we're getting, I think it's eight for South. I just got this quote at 5:30, so eight for South.
I understand what you're talking about, because two of my boys went through the automotive, and my son is mechanic, one of mine is, and there's no way that you can huddle, because I even watch them when they're changing oil and doing tire rotations at my house. And I've gone through cosmetology now at the high school, I'm a little bit older. I went through many years, you know, and you've got everybody in the classroom, and back then, you didn't have these big TVs, and when the instructor's up there and showing you how to do a cut, you know, everybody gathered around. But I mean, if you're at your mannequin and you're watching them do a cut, you can kind of do, try to duplicate it on the mannequin. And so I kind of get it, you know, the automotive, the hair. I'm also esthetician, I have all these licenses, I don't do very much, I keep saying that. But I'm not crazy about the price. This is the best we could get on all of this for $21,885 total.
This is one of the quotes that IT got for me today, so I can get two more quotes, but I think it'd probably be in the same ballpark, within $1,000.
Well, I really like to see more than one quote, because Mr. Smith will tell you, I'm a stickler on quotes. I know that we're getting close to school.
Yeah.
But we're supposed to get some more quotes, and one quote doesn't really do it, so I will table this to our next meeting. Not unless something comes before we go to the full board on the, in two weeks.
Well, I need to submit this to the Perkins Grant if we're going to use Perkins funding by the 21st, so I don't know if we'll be able to meet those deadlines. This is a company that we have a contract with that does all our AV and electronics, so I don't know, we can, Dan, if one...
Well, I mean, I think because of the timeliness involved with the Perkins Grant closing, the funds will, if we don't spend them, will, may go away. Maybe the, this committee could say, you could move it to the full board, so we have the next board meeting, and then maybe the, could be for the best quote received, we send, we have Dottie and team go back, get two more quotes, and if there's a lower quote that we're comfortable with, we could, we could do that. Because this is an item, I mean, AV does our projectors. We don't, I'm not sure they've done all our TVs. There's a possibility this, you could get this at a better price.
Well, don't we usually ask for more than one quote?
Yeah, we always do.
Oh, okay. Does Perkins Grant usually require more than one quote?
Yes, we usually do get more than one quote, but we just decided on this today, and I was surprised I got the quote as quickly as I did by five o'clock, and in sake of trying to save time, that's why I brought it to you tonight. But I can't get two more quotes, that would be a problem.
Okay, so...
Take Dan's suggestion.
I'm going to. I just got to write this up, and I'll put it on here. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to, um, take the quote from Pro AV Systems. I got to board this just right.
Maybe, maybe it could be to approve...
Yep.
...the purchase of 15 TVs for the high school CTE programs.
The purchase of 15 TVs for the high school CTE program.
At, from the vendor with the lowest price, including installation, yes. So we're approving the purchase of the TVs, just not from who yet, until we get the other quotes. Then we can insert that if we get the, the other quotes.
Okay, so we're going to approve the purchase of 15 TVs for the high school CTE program from the vendor with the lowest price, which includes installation.
Second?
Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carry. Okay, so we'll get that on there after.
You should put paid by the Perkins Grant.
Oh, and I'm going to amend it, paid by the Perkins Grant.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? One more. Okay, what's the next one?
All right. Under Carl Perkins, Perkins Five, we need to introduce work-based learning to all of our 18 programs, and in order to do this, we need to be able to take students out to the workplace. So we would like to purchase a 15-passenger van that will enable our students to go out to the workplace, will enable our teachers to accompany them, and AutoFair gave us a quote of $47,615. Unfortunately, there aren't many auto dealers in New Hampshire that sell these vans, and we did go down to Massachusetts, it was higher, we did get a quote, but it wasn't put on paper. So the best quote was the 47,615, and again, this will be coming from the Perkins Grant. And I know John may want to talk to how automotive would use this, so we can explain how teachers and manufacturing him.
Oh, I can talk for automotive, because I've been doing, I was doing the automotive internship for many years. We've had students going out to job sites. We place them at different, for automotive, it was different dealers or shops, independent shops, and, you know, whatever was related to our field. And they work basically during their fourth block, and some of them get hired and they work after school. The problem we were running into all the time was, some kids don't have licenses, or they don't have cars. Let's face it, they're 16, you know, money's kind of hard to come by, and cars are not cheap anymore. So those students, we were bussing out to a lot of those places if we could. We were bussing them out to the auto loop, basically, for the best advantage. Problem would be, bus picks them up from North, from South, gets them out there, and then they'd have to come back within a half hour, so they'd only have a half hour of the time at the shop, because we were also sharing the bus with, what's the name of that program? Hospitality was actually sending their students to a hotel to work at. So sharing that one bus and having the bus driver wait for us became an issue, and I would, couldn't go out until the students were all out. Having the van is actually a pretty decent idea, because now we can actually take our students, drop them off, and be able to check on them, touch base with the service manager, touch base with, or any manager that they're working with, touch base with the techs that they're working with, and we can make our rounds, instead of just having the bus driver sit there waiting at one spot. I think that's actually an excellent idea, although I just found out about it today. That's cool.
And I spoke to our broadcast teacher in that program, and they're going to be doing work for the National Police Department, and it's very difficult just to get students to go from the high school up to the police department. So this way, they can transport the students, and it makes life easier for the students and the instructor.
You mean right over here? I would think so many buses go between the high schools that that would be fairly easy, because it's on their way to South.
Well, it's the timing of their, when the buses leave South, they have a destination, and to make the loop and drop them off, then there's also the timing of picking them up and bringing them back. So this gives more flexibility to the instructor.
Can you tell me about the insurance for anybody driving this?
Well, we're going to be working that out with risk management. We're going, it's going to take four months for this to come in, once we order it, so during that time, we will be working with risk management for procedures.
I, I know auto dealers are shying on cars from everything I read in the paper. Did you go to, I know we do a lot of business with AutoFair, did you go to any other car dealers to get other quotes?
Most car dealers don't deal with vans. They, we tried Best Ford, we tried Place in Massachusetts, and they've all come back to try AutoFair. Whether it's because they do volume business or not, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so was Ford the only company that you went to, or did you look at other companies other than Ford? Because I think, this is almost $50,000, Perkins Grant or not, this is a lot of money, and I know that vehicles is very scarce because of the chip.
Right.
So now your dealings isn't happening the way it used to, because if you drive down Amherst Street, you see at the dealerships, it's like bare pickings.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, this is a new vehicle. We don't know what the cost of the insurance is. Thank you, Ms. Oden, for that question. We're going to be using it. So how long do you anticipate these, the years on this? Are you going to be coming back in two, three years and asking for another vehicle, or are we going to ride this out for the life of it?
I would suspect for the life of it.
I just, I know that we should be, as a Perkins Grant, but I just think the price here is just a little hefty, hefty.
Well, cars have gone up quite a bit in the last, last year. A regular, a regular car, what I'd say, regular car?
This is a, I can help a little bit here, knowing automotive. This is a passenger vehicle, 15-passenger, you know, 15-person passenger vehicle. It is a niche. The Ford Transit is a pretty decent model. I, I don't understand why, you know, our Best Ford can't help, but that makes sense that AutoFair is a volume dealer. The other manufacturers you have, you have Dodge, which is going to be outrageous, as far as I understand, because that's going to be the Mercedes-based, the big van, and I don't know what General Motors has anymore. I haven't seen them put out a passenger van like that in a while. I think you have a time constraint here also.
We do.
Yeah.
Because we need to close the grant by the 21st of August.
And that quote is in the state of New Hampshire. The Massachusetts one was more expensive, what you're saying, but still, that's Massachusetts. We want to keep our money in, in the state, as far as I'm understanding. That makes more sense, too. So we don't have many dealerships in, in the state of New Hampshire that are actually going to deal with that, in my experience.
Can I ask Dan a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Donovan, you deal with this a lot. What is your...
Well, when it was, this was brought up a little while ago, I, I'm not 100% sure it's the greatest idea personally. You know, I, we would have to, any approval of this would have to be contingent upon Dave Rossio transportation approving it, as well as risk management on the insurance side. You know, they're, you know, Dottie said they'll reach out to them, they haven't yet. I don't know what they would say. As far as the number of drivers, you know, certain teachers can probably drive it, certain teachers probably can't drive it, maybe based on their driving record, maybe a skill thing, I don't know, but we did talk about this a little, and I thought we were going to push it off. But we did talk about this a little, and I thought we were gonna push it off, and then it's here today. So it's, I'm not 100% comfortable with it right now.
Well, I, I have some concerns. We're pushed up against a time limit that's not really the best way to enter something this expensive. I realize it's not coming out of the school budget, but it's coming out of Perkins grant. What, what, what's the capacity of some of our small buses? You know, we have quite a few of the small.
Yeah, they're typically, I think, 12 to 15.
And are they used during the day all the time? I know they're, they go between schools and sometimes the times are different, but I know the high school starts early and gets out a little bit earlier than most of the elementary schools. Would that be something? Have you looked into that, whether the transportation company would have one of the small buses available for your students?
Well, we don't know the students and teachers' exact schedule right now, so it was difficult to give that to the transportation company because it wouldn't be a set schedule every day. And this is going to be used by the entire department. So it's difficult for us to say today what the schedule will be for an entire year for Transportation to build a schedule around us. So that's why the accessibility of having our own van was recommended to us by the Career and Technical Bureau at the state. So this is probably something most of the centers will be embarking on over the next few years. It's just that we had the funding available in the Perkins grant this year. We may not have it next year. And this opportunity may not be available again to us.
Yes.
I wish we had more information about insurance. How much, how, this is close to $50,000. How much more do you have in Perkins Fund's money to pay for the gas and the insurance on something like this?
We would have to put it in Perkins funding for next year for maintenance. This van isn't going to be available for four to five months, so it'll be almost the end of the school year next year, and we can put it in Perkins funding for the following year.
But for, for this coming year, you, I think you said it would take four months, September, October, November, December, maybe around January 1st.
Right.
Where will the money come for the insurance and the gas? Will that come out of Perkins?
I could put in a change request and ask them to approve it.
And what happens if they say no?
I don't think they'll say no, because they suggested we get the van.
Oh, okay.
You all said?
Yeah.
Here's my problem. How long ago did you know about this, that you needed this van?
We knew about it beginning of July.
Okay, now, now at a time crunch. School starts in, what, 21 days, three weeks? Three weeks we're back in school. So you're asking us to approve something because the Perkins grant is going to run out if we don't approve it right now. Mr. Donovan is questioning this, too, because we've got to see if the Director of Transportation agrees with this, see if he can get drivers. We've got to make sure risk management with the insurance. Ms. Oden just asked how we're gonna pay for this with gas. So, so if we don't have the money to pay for it with gas, because you got to ask Perkins, so we're gonna have a $50,000 van sitting on our lot doing nothing? Because the money isn't in the budget to pay for your gas. Am I correct, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, they would have to use operating budget.
They'll have to use operating budget money, but that money's already been allocated into different line items. So, I mean, I'm just a little hesitant on this. I mean, we could make the motion pending everything else, but that doesn't mean you're gonna get the van right away because we've got to make sure it goes through all the checks and balances here in the city. Got to make sure we can insure it, because that's another sum of money to insure it because it's gonna be probably deemed commercial, right? Versus, most likely, I would say, because it's not a, you know, it's not a vehicle for just home vehicle use type of thing. So the rating, I'm sure, is going to be different on it because we've got schoolkids in there, more protection. We've got the gas costs, which is rising now. So if it comes back, that risk management gives us too high of a quote. And then that's gonna have to come out of the operating budget right now, too. I mean, there's a lot of factors, a lot of variables. This should have come to us in July. So then this way, we could have put the stipulations on it, and you could have been coming back, hopefully, now with all the answers to hopefully have purchased it. So did you put a deposit down on this or anything?
No.
Nope. So, and so nobody else, no other company has a 15-passenger van, other than Ford?
No. Well, Auto Fair has several different auto manufacturers that they represent, so.
Yeah. Up in Manchester or Concord?
Manchester.
Manchester.
I have to say, I'm not real comfortable. We don't know the insurance cost. And, and when you carry kids, is it more expensive? And the numbers?
I mean, the, the city does a lot of self-insurance, so the cost isn't that much. It's, unless, because you're, you're having, you know, most students are transported by bus. It's a private bus company, they have special insurance, they have trained drivers. We're taking just teachers driving a 15-person van. I, I honestly don't know, but, you know, if, if it were three people in a car, that's one thing. This is, you could have 12 students in a van with a teacher who's not a trained driver. So I, I don't know. I honestly don't know.
I'd like to research that a little bit more. I'd like to wait to hear from risk management. I don't want to buy it and have it sitting someplace because the insurance is so high, and that's going to come out of the operating budget.
Yeah, no, there's certainly, there's certainly more questions that have to be asked.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Two things. If we have time, I would suggest going to Gropone Ford for a second quote, because we've pretty much bought all our vehicles from them. They've been consistently the, the lowest. But we have a similar situation with, that we bought a van for Brentwood last year.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I mean, that's parked in the South parking lot and sat there ever since we bought it. COVID, I mean, I understand why, but we must have done this similar research for that. I wasn't part of that research, so I don't know what we, what we looked into with risk management or any of that stuff. But again, you were looking at a teacher potentially picking up kids across the school district or across the city and driving them. So we, corporate-wise, city-wise, we must have looked at this before.
So what happened to the van that we had for Brentwood?
It is sitting in front of my office.
And what are we doing with that van?
Sitting in front of my office, probably waiting for the school year to start.
So are we going to be using it for Brentwood students that are going to be, what are we going to be doing with that?
My understanding of that, and maybe Dan can pick it up, my understanding is they're going to use it to help pick up students that couldn't make their way to school.
No, I, I think it's actually being used for anything but that. Because I think one of the issues with transporting students around the insurance is you can't transport them to and from school. That's, that's kind of the issue. So they did buy it with the IDEA grant, and it was like two years ago. But because of COVID, they really hadn't used it. But they were going to be doing, bringing students to service places and things like that. They had limited, as far as I understood, the drivers to two people.
So here's my question.
I'm not sure if that was part of the insurance thing or, but.
So that brings up a question here. What are we doing with that van? Are we doing nothing with it? Or can we have them use that van? If we can't pick up kids to and from school, can't the CTE department use that van rather than going out and buying a new van?
At this point, I believe they're going to start using it at Franklin Street come September. It just wasn't used because we weren't going to school.
So what are we going to be using it for? What are we gonna be transporting?
We're gonna be.
And from, where?
We're gonna be transporting students to service-type jobs, let's say, or to bringing them to, I mean, these are different kinds of students, right? So I, I don't know exactly, but they wanted to bring them to certain places. I don't know exactly what.
Okay, so how big is that van? We have a 15-passenger van?
I believe it's a 12.
12, 12, 15, okay, close enough for argument's sake right now. And how many students are we going to be transporting from Brentwood to services, to jobs?
I don't know the numbers. I'd have to talk to the Brentwood person, but.
Well, I'd like to know, because I'd like to know how many students are going to be in Brentwood, because you might be able to use a smaller van for Brentwood and be able to have them use the bigger van. I mean, we've got to be creative here right now.
Well, I guess my concern there, if it was paid with, with IDEA money, I'm guessing there is a problem with other programs using it. Would that be correct?
Probably correct, yes.
Can we look into that, too?
Sure. I can, I can talk to the Brentwood leadership and find out what the plans are.
Exactly, because, I mean, if we used, and I get it with the IDEA money, because it's for special ed type of thing, but there might be, I don't know. Maybe we can find out if we can get an exception on it because it hadn't been used and it's just sitting there. And I'm sure, do we have any special ed kids in CTE?
It depends on the program, but most likely.
Okay, okay, but then, then that might work if you do have special ed students. But I mean, I'm trying to think out of the box and trying to figure out what are we doing here? Because, you know, we do have a problem with this. It came in late. We do, Mrs. Oden and I do feel that it's a rush, and we can't rush this. Mr. Smith said try Gropone, we might be able to get a better price. We can make a motion contingent upon certain items get addressed and to see if you can get another quote from Gropone. And we can always bring it up at the full board meeting in two weeks, like we're gonna do with the other item on the agenda.
I just wanted to add that if it is bought with Perkins funding, it needs to be used for CTE only. So I just wanted to, the same thing with the IDEA.
Makes sense.
But, I mean, let's look at, let's explore all this and see, because I'd like to know what Brentwood is doing, because if, if you have a van that's sitting there that we're not using, I mean, maybe we can get an exception to use it for CTE. And especially if you have any special ed kids that, that would be using it, it might be able, I don't know. I don't know with the government right now. I don't think the government knows what it's doing anymore. But I'm just trying to explore options here.
My concern is risk management. If you could check with them to see what the insurance is going to, to be, what the cost is for that. I know vans probably don't get much more than 12, 14 miles a gallon. Would that be right? Getting a big one like that. So, you know, gas isn't as cheap as it was, but it's not as expensive as it was either. So, but I, my concern is I don't know how many people can be insured to drive it. I don't know what the cost will be. And what, I said, you know, we're gonna have to pay for the gas out of operating budget. So if you could find some of that out, like Ms. Johnson said, we could use that information in the full board.
Okay.
These vans seem quite popular, though. I see a lot of them, they're used for deliveries. They don't have seats in them for 12 or 15 people, but I think this. Really?
And we were gonna put the CTE logo on the, on the van, so it would be identified.
And I'm guessing this limits to how you can use it with the CTE?
Just the students.
If it's paid for Perkins grant, okay.
Although price-wise, that's not bad.
No.
That's less than a new truck. Kind of jealous.
It is less than a truck. Truck could probably be about $65,000.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the quote from the lowest dealership for the CTE program in the amount not to exceed $47,615, contingent upon the Transportation Director Risk Management approval, and to find out the teachers who will be driving the, the van. And this would be sent to the full board at the next meeting. Does that sound good? Okay.
Did you have the word van in there?
Van.
Passenger van.
And this is a 15-passenger van. I'll just add that in there. I thought I had it, but we'll just make sure.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Okara?
No, I think we've burdened you with enough tonight, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is plant operations, pest control. Is that you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it is. Thank you, and good evening. So I have three items. The first is pest control. So we've been going year by year with a vendor, at least for the last 10 years, the price has been going up, up, up. And I felt it was time that we actually sent out an RFP to ensure we're getting the best price. So I did put a RFP out, it was on the city website. In addition to that, we sent it to known vendors in the area. And the copy of the RFP is in your, your packet. So the actual program's called Integrated Pest Management Services. And in a nutshell, that is a, limits the use of pesticides in our schools, which of course is what we strive to see. Try to identify where there's activity, and then you take appropriate action. Action may or may not include pesticides. If it does include pesticides, and that only occurs when staff and children are not on, on site. And it's with products that are approved by the, the government. And we have the MSDS on file. So unfortunately, we only received two bids after our efforts to, to get more. And those two companies that provided bids were Proficient and Pest End. Proficient is out of Fairhaven, Massachusetts. Pest End's out of Plastow and Methuen. They've kind of, have two offices. I asked for three things. One was for them to do an assessment of the schools, walk around each individual school, provide a, a report and recommendations. And then to provide an integrated pest management service and give me a, an annual fee to do so. And in addition to that, I looked for up to a five-year contract, so I wanted to know what the inflation rate was over that period of time. So I can, carried a spreadsheet which shows the bid comparison for you tonight. Proficient had, over the life of a five-year contract, a 5% total inflation, and Pest End had a 3% total. Proficient, for the school assessments, they've been actually doing the, the work for quite some time, at least six years. They put $0 for the assessment, felt they already knew the schools, but I'll still, I would still be holding their feet to the fire as far as the report and providing recommendations. And Pest End actually had a cost to do that, it was $14,040. But when you put all the, the individual, the actual cost per year, and then apply the inflation across the five years, Pest End is clearly cheaper. Not by a lot, but they are cheaper. Not by a lot, but they are cheaper if you factor in both the assessment and the annual service. The other thing I asked for was for an hourly rate to do additional things. So if we have snakes, bats, birds, other creepy-crawler things that might come into our schools that we can't get rid of, then we give them a call, and then they give us a rate. Proficient said that we're not going to charge you for that. Pest End said $150 an hour. I talked to Doug DeFina, who runs this program for me. He said probably in the last five years, we might have done that twice. So it doesn't happen very often. So let's say it happens twice in five years, even three times in five years. That's still not going to bridge the gap between the costs between these two firms. So my recommendation is to award a contract of up to five years with a not-to-exceed price of... So that'd be to Pest End, Inc. of Plastow, New Hampshire, That's the five-year cost. Might suggest that we round that to $71,000 in case there are some occasional bats, birds, other incidents where we need to bring in that special service. And the funding line is Contract Services, which is 91.1, .22, 2620, 53628. And that counting string was on the memo that I had included in the package.
Any questions, Mrs. Oden?
Supposing, and I've had this happen sometimes, especially as kids get older, the parents don't check the backpacks as frequently, and the ants can get into the classroom. Would that be something that they would have to come in for?
They could if, and they have. But for the most part, our custodial staff handles that. We put out ant cups and that sort of thing. More often than not, it's through a crack in the slab or the foundation wall, and then we have to go and seal those cracks. And that's generally, you know, and when I go back to bats, birds, and other critters, it's usually our staff that takes care of them. That's why we don't have to call on these people to do it.
Okay. Thank you. I know we, we had to go buy a Have-A-Hart trap for Groundhog. We gave him a relocation package.
Is he gone?
He's down in Mine Falls.
Everybody loves Mine Falls, a great place to walk, right?
Yeah.
And for critters.
We have a couple of Have-A-Harts in my arsenal at plant operations, so we're prepared to do that as well.
Oh, they're expensive. I could have borrowed yours.
Could have borrowed mine. I have a couple of them. My neighbors catch them home, they go to Hollis. They relocate to Hollis now. They're residents there.
Moving on up.
Okay, so we good on this one? Okay.
Yeah, and just, could I, I'd suggest we just agree to the contract. It's a five-year contract, so I don't think you need any extra money. If that happens, it'll just come in as it incurs. So I think that we want to be careful. The contract is $69,660 over five years.
So do we want to just-
I just approved the $69,660, not the little extra that Mr. Smith was talking about.
Okay. $69,660?
Yes.
And on the, when we're done with this, I just got to go back on the van. I left something out on the motion.
Okay. You can amend it.
Yeah, I'm going to amend it. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid from Pest End, Inc. of Plastow, New Hampshire, for a five-year contract not to exceed, at this point, $69,660, funding from account Contract Services,
Second?
Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes yes? Soden?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, I just want to go back to the one on the van, because that was kind of lengthy. And I've been writing as we've been talking. So this has to do with the bid from Auto Fair on the 15-passenger van. I want to amend it to accept the quote from the lowest dealership for the 15-passenger van for CTE program in the amount not to exceed $47,615, contingent upon Transportation Director Risk Management approval, teachers driving the van, to be sent to the full board next meeting, funding from Perkins Grant. That's what I left out.
What, funding from Perkins Grant?
That's what I left out. So, do you second it again?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes? Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I just wanted to get that corrected while I remembered it. Okay, now, Mr. Smith, I guess we have the gym floor again?
Yeah, not the gym floor, but I can give you an update on those afterwards. But, so this is the locker room floors, both the boys' and girls' locker room floors of the South High School. You and the full board voted back in June. I gave a contract of $56,000 to remove the existing floor and replace it. Upon removal of the existing floor, they basically discovered a bit of a mess. There was actually a fair amount of water underneath the existing floor, which was all rolled product, like linoleum. Actually found a lot of the glue or mastic that was applied 20 years ago was still wet, which is kind of hard to fathom how that would happen. But if it stays wet the entire time, I guess that can. And so whatever sealer that was used at the time did not keep the water out. If you recall, a number of years ago, we had issues with the rubberized gym at the South High School. Part of that was a pipe that was, that broke. But part was also infiltration of the water through the slab. So we do have a water table issue in that general area. That whole gymnasium was built where there wasn't a school back 2003, actually. We built that addition. So it's not totally surprising that there's water issues. But did we include the pictures of the... Okay, so you saw those wonderful pictures. Probably can't tell much from looking at them, but you're seeing different colors. You're seeing the glue, which is more of the yellowish pictures, yellowish color. You're seeing a dark gray, which is the sealer that they can't get off. So they, this was middle of last week, all this came to light. They carried themselves, this is National Wallpaper, carried an allowance within their contract of about $2,000 to deal with unforeseen circumstances. But the only way to remove that sealer, well, you want to remove the old seal. Obviously, it's not working. But you also want to remove it so you can apply your own new sealer to help with the warranty of the new product and stop the moisture from coming up. They went out with their contractor and were told it was going to cost $24,000. So the difference being $22,000. Because school was starting, and the fall sports season actually starting next week, we had to make a decision this past week. And I spoke with Mr. Donovan, and we decided to tell them to proceed with that work. And it is, so we're hoping that you agree with that decision. And the methods, it's a bead blaster. They actually have to blast the old product off the floor. And it's taken two and a half days just to do one of the two locker rooms so far. So I'm hoping that work will, they can start putting the new floor down on the girls' locker room, and then do the bead blasting in the boys' locker room. And early next week, I'll be wrapping that floor up as well. So we're looking for your approval to increase the contract by $22,000. The original funding, as well as this additional funding, would come from deferred maintenance account.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. They don't know where the water came from, so what are they doing to ensure we won't have that problem again?
They're putting a new sealer on her.
The sealer should take care of it?
The sealer should take care of it. Ceiling has improved over time. When you put down a new slab of construction lesson, you dig out the ground, you're putting a good sheet of plastic down, putting rebar, then you put your concrete down, and you're sealing your concrete on top of that. Pretty sure all those things happened. I was, it was here at the time. And we also had a clerical works that was watching that stuff. Why it failed this time, I don't know.
Is the water table high there?
That's my, that's what I'm thinking. Because again, right next door, in the medium-sized gym, the same thing happened. We had water physically percolating through the slab, up into the rubberized floor. We had water on top of that.
Is this the north school or south school?
South.
South?
South school.
Because you're right by the river there. Is there a culvert underneath? Because I know there is over here. And it's backed up, I remember when it flooded the fields after the school was built here.
Yeah, there was a stream. I forgot the name, Salmon Brook Stream?
Right, but there's coverts-
Yep.
-underneath the field. And when they were building this, I brought it up, because there's a 100-year-old floodplain out there. Gee, I can remember things, 20-some-odd years ago. Can't remember what I did two minutes ago, you know? Short-term memory.
Then five years later, we voted to put in a pump to help pump all the stuff out. Otherwise, you'd have a lake out there every time it-
Right.
-rained hard.
So, so we don't know if it's coming up? Is it coming up through the floor in the South School? We don't know?
So we can figure.
So I guess the question is, if we keep getting moisture, are we going to get mold in there? In the floor underneath?
We haven't, we've seen some signs of mold in the past, you know, like on the lower parts of the wall, which we've cleaned up.
Not good.
But by doing this project, hopefully we'll take care of that, and it won't reoccur. If we seal it properly, then the moisture's not going to come up through.
But we don't know where the moisture is coming from. Are we sure 100% it's coming from the floors? Or is it coming from someplace else? Because if we're starting to get mold, we don't need problems to have to have mold remediation.
No, no. The type of mold we're seeing so far is easily taken care of by the custodial staff. Just takes a Clorox or a bleach-type solution, and it's gone. We keep our eye on it, and we're aware of the situation in the locker rooms. Again, I'm hoping that, there's no guarantee, but I'm hoping that by sealing the floor properly this time around, that that will take care of itself. But we have to keep our eye on it.
You know, we're spending 50, is it 5, 6, $78,000? Am I adding correctly to get this? 78, 58, and 22, 78, $80,000, when you add the 2,000. You know, we're spending this money to fix the floor, because moisture got in, but we don't know exactly where it's coming in. And, you know, you don't want to keep revisiting this, because when they tore down that high school, right down to the frame, there were issues in that school, a lot of issues in the South School back when. And so the question is, the issues that they might have had back when, are they repeating, because we didn't address it back then either? We keep putting, it's like putting a Band-Aid on, and the cut keeps bleeding. So I'd like, I don't know about you, Mrs. Oden, but I'd like to kind of get an idea where this moisture is coming from, because we're just putting it on. And, I mean, the floor has to be done. It's being done, so we're going to need to approve this.
Yeah.
But the question becomes, where is this moisture coming from? Because are you going to come back maybe three, four, five years from now? Because you're fixing it, you're sealing it. But what are we sealing? It's just in my house, you know, if I have, it's like, if something drips from upstairs to the basement, I see a puddle, but I look up and I don't know where it's coming from. I can't just let that happen, and then I see it a second or third time. You've got to investigate it.
How much do you think it would cost for somebody to investigate? I mean, I'm guessing they'd have to drill some holes? Would that be through the concrete or outside the area?
I guess I would suggest they do both. I want to say we did do that when we did the gym work. They did some isolated tests, pits, we'll call them, throughout the gym.
And what did they find?
I'll answer your first question first. $15,000. I think our contract at the time's Gale Associates. They were the design engineer, and they also were the engineers. What was the second question? I'm sorry.
What did they find?
Didn't they, didn't they find where the outside water had come down?
Part of the issue, part of the issue, there were a couple of... Part of the issue is the rain leader coming down from the roof, emptied into that pipe that was broken underneath the floor.
Right.
Oh. So that probably was not an expensive fix?
It was, because we had to open up the entire floor. It was a $100,000 easy.
Oh, that was expensive.
Yes.
Because I'm thinking if it's like the water table is high, I'm guessing that would be tremendously expensive.
We'd have to bring in a geotech engineer or somebody like that to look at that. I can sniff around and ask some people what they would suggest.
Can you, like Paula said, we have to get it done, have that floor done. But, you know, she's right. You don't want to throw good money after bad. But sometimes if it's, the fix is so expensive that a redo every 20 years might be cheaper.
Yeah. I mean, it's like buying a grill, right? You can buy a Weber for 800, or you can buy four $200 cheap ones. Sometimes people choose the latter.
Yeah.
But it's just to kind of find out what's... It might be nothing. It might be a simple fix. But I don't want to know, I don't know about 20, 30 years from now, if I'll be around.
I don't.
Don't say that. But you just don't want, all of a sudden, one day, you come to us and say, you know, we have this big problem here that we kind of overlooked. And if, I can get a copy of those reports, if you've got the summary of it. I'm kind of curious. Or are they buried away somewhere?
They're buried, but I'm sure I have them somewhere.
I'm just kind of curious to see what it says. Are you, any more questions?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the addition of $22,000, not to exceed, to the Nashua, National Wallpaper for the floor replacement in the Nashua South High School locker rooms, floors. It's kind of broken up there. I can't read my handwriting. Funding from the deferred maintenance account. Did I miss something?
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes? Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. I can't read my handwriting. Okay.
If I could, since we're just talking about floors, I'll give you some good news.
Good news.
So we're doing a, not a total reflooring, but a flooring job at the North High School main gym here. And I stopped by tonight to just take a look at it. They've done all the floorboard replacement that they're going to do, which was about half the floor, and they've sanded everything down. So they should be starting repainting the lines and then doing the finish over the coming week. So that's on, that's moving well. We decided, and I talked to Lisa Gingras about it, we decided to hold off on the South High School gym floor until next summer. Just wasn't enough time, and the contractor themselves said they weren't going to get to it. And Lisa needs the gym for fall sports, so we held off on that. The South High School Media Center floor is complete. They replaced the carpet. We went with carpet tile for that. And same thing for the Amherst Street Media Center and the office. That job is complete. And that topic on a positive note, to get ready for the next one.
Okay, so moving right along. Mr. Smith, recommendation to award contract to Harvey Construction to build handicap ramp at the Franklin Street School?
Yes. So... So part of Harriman's design originally was to build a handicap ramp in front of the school. If you're familiar with, right on Franklin Street, you look at the school, there's an overhang, stairs up, and handicap ramp, we thought would be a suitable thing to put They did the design. We were looking to replicate pretty much what's in front of my office, so it's a concrete structure, goes one way and then back up the other. Once, so we had Harvey Construction, who was our construction manager that we use for the construction projects, take a look at it, and they said you can't do that because on both sides of the main entrance, you have utility lines, and one side is old clay pipe. They didn't dare put anything heavy in that, and there are various utility lines on the other side. So we looked at putting up a pier system, so sonotubes, and then some sort of structure to build a ramp. Actually discussed with Dan, and we talked about putting a wood ramp because that would probably be the cheapest way to do it. And I talked to the building department downtown, and they said, no, you cannot do a wood ramp. That's flammable, and it's permanent structure, you cannot do that. Looked at potentially doing a aluminum ramp that, if you're going to build something that's going to last a long time, it's kind of flimsy. And if you've walked on aluminum ramps, you'll know what I'm talking about. So we ended up with going with a steel. And you know what price of steel is doing. So in the middle of July, Harvey gave me a price, and they've worked with all their subs to come up with a price of $98,000 to build this ramp. So I immediately got sticker shock, Dan got sticker shock as well. They came back 11 days later and said, we missed some things, price is now $111,000. So sticker shock got worse. So I called the building department guy and said, this isn't going to happen before we open the school, just doesn't, it's not enough time. Can we get a temporary CO for the school? Because we have a handicap entrance on the very back, so if you go on the backside of the back corner, with, I met all of you that, we did some tours. You can go off, right off of street level, it's accessible. And the elevator is just right down the hallway there. So he said, yes, we can do that. So after seeing these prices and discussing it again with Dan, I'd like to explore with the city, the notion of not building a handicap ramp in front of the school, and just going with the ramp in the back of the school. This building used to be the Nashua Christian Academy. It survived as a school for however long that was there, with just the handicap ramp in the back. And it seemed to work. I don't know if the public school systems have different requirements. I'm still exploring that. I've asked Harriman, who designed it. They haven't got back to me yet. I've called, I've talked to Mark Collins, who's my building department contact, left him some messages, but he's on vacation until next Monday. So I haven't gotten a response from him either. So we're kind of stuck. We can occupy the building with that rear entrance. So in my mind, this can probably wait until a later date because we'll have that temporary CO. But if we do, if we do get the response back that says, no, you have to build it, then that's the price tag, $111,000.
Okay.
I can't, in all good conscience, tell you to proceed with that. I don't think, I don't think Dan thinks so either. Can't speak for him, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a lot of money for a ramp that's only going to be used by a couple of people. If the students dropped off on a bus, they're going to use the back one, they're not going to use the front one because probably the plan is for the bus to drop off on that Locust Street, the side one, and they'd come in that way anyway. So this just seemed exorbitant to me. And like Sean said, the school has worked as a school for many years. They didn't have that. And with the price of steel and everything right now, it's, so I think if we can maybe continue to investigate other potential options instead of jumping into this right away.
Yeah, I don't doubt that Harvey gave us a good price. I mean, we've worked with them for many, many years. They're going to give us a good price, but as Dan said, the price of steel and other materials right now, this is a lot of money.
Well, I guess, considering there is a ramp in the back, I mean, so it's handicap accessible.
Yes.
So I would think that would cover it for now because I look, the price is exorbitant in my mind.
Yeah, I do have to do some improvements to the back. There's some dips and doodles in the asphalt that I have to take care of, but that's minor.
It will be cheaper than $110,000.
Yes, much, 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 much. I am putting in an AI phone so you can buzz the main office to get in. We also will have to put in handicap accessible door hardware. But again, we're talking peanuts compared to $111,000.
I agree with both of you.
So I guess maybe, I should have an answer by the next Board of Ed meeting, one way or the other. So I don't know how you want to treat this, if you want to provisionally approve it or based on further investigation, or, you know, how does it get to the board if we have to do it?
I think because of the, we don't, I'd just soon bring it back next month to finance and ops. Because, I mean, we're going to, we're going to get the temporary CO using the back, and so, it's not like we're going to turn around and do it immediately, right?
Right.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions, and then what I'm going to do, we're going to table this. We'll table this because I put on here, I have the motion already written up, and I put on here, motion on hold per update from Mr. Donovan. So, and I'll put on here, tabled. Question, as I was reading this at home when I got the packet, it said, the architect originally, Harriman, initially designed a ramp similar to the, to that in front of the plant operations office. Okay. Upon inspection of the site by the construction manager, Harvey Construction, it was determined this design wouldn't work due to the presence of the underground utility lines. So did they design this without looking at it?
I don't think they realized the utility lines were there.
Okay, but once you, if you're going to design anything, you would probably go to DigSafe, or you would do the research where the lines are. So did they design this without going out there and looking at the property originally?
I would say...
It's yes or no?
If you were the prudent architect, you would probably do those things, but you're very much, you're looking at an old building, and you're depending upon existing plans, which were practically nil in this case. There were no building plans, no utility plans. So it was tough to, I'm not trying to defend them, but I can see where it'd be a difficult task.
So you would have to go out there and take a look, walk the site, because then you would see if there's utility lines or anything.
You'd have to go down in the basement, yes.
The reason I'm asking this is because here they came in, and they went out, they made a design before they even looked at the property. So did we have to pay for the design to begin with, when they designed the ramp?
Yes.
Okay, I want my money back on that. I'm going to tell you something here right now. Because they went out and did a design, then they came back and they said that they couldn't put the ramp where they wanted to put the ramp because it wouldn't fit. And so now they had to go back, now they went out and redesigned it. So we paid for something. I mean, this is my money. I pay taxes, this is taxpayers' money. Everybody who sat in the audience last night, who's from Nashua, owns a home, taxpayers' money. We paid a company to do a job, and they didn't do that. And that's the first thing you're going to do before you do design plans, is you've got to walk the site to make sure where the utilities are, where the water lines are. Anybody comes in even to put an underground system in there, sprinkler system, what do they do? They call DigSafe to make sure when they come in to dig everything up in the front of your house, they're not hitting the gas lines and the water lines.
That's typically done by the actual contractor doing the work, though, not by the designer.
But I'm just saying that as an example.
Yes.
But if I'm putting a line in, and I don't have a contractor or something, I'm going to call them, regardless, regardless who calls them. But we paid him to make a design, and it didn't work.
But Sean, I think the design, we didn't hire them just to design this. They did all the design work at the building. So it was a contract to do all the design work inside and outside of Franklin. This was just one piece of that contract. And I don't think the contract was termed in a way that said, okay, design ramp is one price. If they did that, then it would be easy to do it. It was more of a price here, we'll design, we'll design the building so that it fits the needs of a school.
And I'm also the one that said, I want to replicate what's in front of my building. So I didn't even look at the utilities either before I told them to do that. It's something you're not really going to explore until you bring in the contractor that's responsible for doing the work, that's going to identify that sort of thing. And a total lack of building plans is a big factor here. I get what you're saying, I understand.
They're doing the building anyway, so why wouldn't they know where the utility lines are anywhere? They're already coming in to work on the building. And so I have questions about this. It's $111,000, I know we're going to put it on hold, but I, when I read this, I almost fell over, that the contractor doesn't do that, and then they've got to go back and redesign it. I mean, we're lucky that this building right now has handicapped accessible, and hopefully it will meet the quality, the qualifications of ADA back now versus when it was then because it could have been grandfathered in when the school owned it.
Uh huh.
Because ADA is stricter now. But it's just a principle of this whole thing. So, Mrs. Oden, do you have anything to say?
No, just, I think, to put it on hold at this point is the best thing. I'm just thankful that we have the rear handicap accessible.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion on the recommendation to award the contractor, Harvey Construction, to build handicap ramp at Franklin Street School. We're going to table this till next meeting. Mrs. Oden?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson, yes?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. So now we have Mr. Donovan, special education contracts. The first one is MSB.
Well, we can do that first, sure. So the contract with MSB, I gave you, in the packet, all the pages weren't copied, so I gave you last night the full contract before the meeting.
Yep.
I noticed when I was reviewing the package yesterday that, but basically, this is, this is a contract, it's a three-year contract to continue to use this firm to do our Medicaid billing. So as you know, service, certain services we provide, we can receive Medicaid funds from the federal government. The process for this invoicing, it's very complicated, it's changing all the time. The last two or three years, it's changed significantly. We've always used a service. I mean, the only other option is to buy software yourself and then hire a person to do it. The danger with that is, it's sort of a one-person job, so if that person leaves, then what are you going to do in the meantime? So we've, this, this group also with this contract provides audit services, and we have been audited before, and they'll then work with the auditors to get the auditor all the information they want. So historically, it's been, it's been a good relationship. We've worked well with them. When I first started, the price was 10%, and I, the first contract I negotiated, I got it down to nine. Interestingly enough, they, their fee, they dropped it down to 8% last time because they had us use a software that they had developed, so we used their software. Then this, this contract, they said 7% per year. So that's a percent lower. I said, that's even better. Then when I took a look at, on the first page of the contract, it says, the pricing is now based upon the number of IEPs you have. So at 7%, that's between 1,000 and 2,000 IEPs. It drops to 6% to 2,000 to 3,000. So I checked and said, how many IEPs do we have right now? And it was 1,998. So we were just too short of the lower percent. So we contacted them, and they're willing to make the price 6% for three years. So that's what the, but I suggest strongly that we use them. We've used them all along, they've been, been very good, and the cost of us doing this ourselves is probably more than this.
It's very time-consuming, even using this. I know the Paris have to go in and enter everything, and...
Yes, yes.
So I, I understand. I think it was back in the 90s when we first started using this, and we were one of the only school districts. It was one of the school district in the state that did it, I think. The business administrator at the time handled it from what I remember. But it, once other school districts found out that Medicaid was available for this, you know, it became a lot more popular, and as it became more popular, people wanted to ensure that everything was done right, and this new business came, came up. So, but I know it is time-consuming, and you want to get this accurate.
Right.
Fully support it.
I don't have any questions. I'm going to make a motion to accept the contract with MSB in the amount not to exceed $150,000 from 7/31/21 to 7/30/2024 from account number 91.1.02233253628.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Did you want to, I'm just going in the order that I have on my sheet. Do you want to do the Clearway next?
Yes. So the Clearway contract, as you know, we've been working with the Adult Learning Center and the Clearway School for many years. And historically, we've been having two contracts with them, one for special ed students and one for more typical students. I've had a little personal issue with this in that whenever we'd, the, there's fewer and fewer special ed students going there. It's not that robust a program for, for special ed students. There's very few students where that, it really works for them. So when we, when we decided to reduce the number of special ed students, then the cost of the typical student went up. So Garth, Dr. McKinney and I met with them, and I said, okay, look, what we're really doing here is paying you a certain percentage of what it costs you to run Clearway, isn't that correct? And they said, yes. And so they brought forward some numbers. So let's say, so we're paying typically about 2/3 of the cost of the Clearway program. So I decided, I said, why don't we just, let's be more transparent about this, let's just say, okay, we're going to have one contract, we can send you so many students, some could be special ed, some will be typical, there will be fewer special ed, like I said, but we're not going to count 10 special ed and 50 typical, something like that. It's just going to be a total number of Nashua students. So they agreed, and so we had a discussion about a few other of the details and stuff. So this is the contract, and this is the contract for this coming school year. It's a small increase over what we paid last year, I think about a 1% increase. So, and then going forward, we're going to be working with them earlier in the year so these contracts don't show up in the late spring and summer. We'll be, we'll be working with them come, let's say, December, January time period, and that'll be part of our own... And that'll be part of our own budgeting process. So I recommend you approve this contract with the Adult Learning Center for the Clearway Alternative School for the 2122 school year for an amount not to exceed $624,000. And the numbers are on the...
So on this, and I know the work that Clearway does. How many more students are going over there versus? I know Clearway is different than Brentwood, two different programs. So how many students are we sending over there outside of special ed that need their services, that type of environment?
That number ranges. Right now, I wouldn't know right now, but typically, it's about 50 students.
About 50 students?
But it sort of, it probably starts less than that as the year goes on. And then as students struggle in the larger high school, they then move over there and finish the year. So their numbers will typically increase as the year goes on. But they have, you know, their staff is, let's say, eight or nine teachers. That's not going to change if they have 50 or they have 45.
And we seem to have our students do better over there in the smaller...
Certain students have had success there, yes.
That's all I want to hear, so, you know, when we're placing them, whether in Brentwood, outer district, you know, where these kids have certain needs that we can't address in the larger setting. I just want to know that, you know, we've had success with them. I mean, when we went to the graduation here, you know, for the night school and the adult learning and all that, I mean, it was wonderful to see them graduating, which a lot of them and the family might have thought that they'd never get through it. And to see them walk across the stage and get that diploma, I mean, that's when you feel good about everything that we squabble about on this board, you know, just to see their success. So, Mrs. Oden?
I have a question. I don't know if you would know, Dan, but I know in the past, there have been some problems. Sometimes students go there, and it's not working for them. And they come back to the high school, and the high school didn't know there were openings for kids. Has that improved, that communication part?
Somewhat. I think it still needs more improvement. But that's, I think, one of the things that, it has to be our principals and guidance at the high school level, working with, with their, you know, their staff at the school to do that. That was one of the complaints about students going over there. They have very strict rules. So if the student acts up, then they just say, sorry, you can't come back. We're like, well, we're sending you a student not because they were the valedictorian in the first place. This is not the perfect student. So, you know, can you work with them more? So that supposedly has taken place. Probably would be better answered by someone like Keith Richard or Nate Burns or one of the guidance counselors, but...
I would just hope if there were openings and there are students that would benefit from Clearway, that we would be aware that there were openings there. There was a communication gap there for a while.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've prevented kids from going over there because there wasn't enough space. I don't. And I think this one contract helps that because it gives us more spaces.
It used to be, what, 10 special ed kids?
Yeah, at one point, it was 15. We knocked it down to 10. And then we were going to knock it down to five. And then that didn't work out price-wise, so that's why we went to the one contract.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the Adult Learning Center for Clearway Alternative School for the school year 2122 for the amount not to exceed $624,000 from account 91.1991111053600 and account 91 dot 1 dot 0212675564.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now, Mr. Donovan with Boothby?
Yes, Boothby is our last contract of the night. They provide therapy services to our special ed students. They provide a certain kind of therapy that we don't have the skill level in our existing staff. We've had this contract with them. It's paid for by the IDEA grant. We've had it, I think, since I've been here. The, the price of the contract is the same as it's been for the last two years. The services have been, been done well. So we suggest we approve the contract with Boothby for the augmentation, what is it? Alternative Augmentative Communication Services.
Any questions?
No.
This will be easy. Okay. I'll move to accept the third-party contract with Boothby Therapy Services to provide valuation, therapy, and consultation services for the 2021-2022 school year. The cost is $30,000, including travel and mileage.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to the credit card reports.
Yes. Per our policies, we're supposed to look at the credit card reports on a quarterly basis. As you can see, with COVID and the schools being shut down, not shut down per se, but everyone not in session, we really haven't used our credit card much. We typically use the credit card for advertising and conferences and travel, things like that. We've only spent the 886 on travel. That was actually a conference up in the, up in Assistant Superintendent, and Superintendent went to it the end of June, I believe it was. So that, that was the costs of the hotel and meals for a couple, two or three days that they were up there. The rest of the costs are advertising, which we have each month for the certain online advertising, and then there's one small amount for supplies. So we're not really using the credit card too, too much. It will pick up, I think last year, we spent the last 12 months was about $32,000, $33,000. And through two months, we're only about $2,500. So just gives you a sense of where we are.
This is nice. Maybe we can keep it low like this.
Well, whether it's paid for on a credit card or whether it's paid for, you know, with the purchase order, but I think the whole idea was that there wouldn't be any abuse of the credit card.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. So do you want me to make a motion to accept it?
I don't, I think it's just something that we, I don't know if you need a motion for that. I think we just give it to the board every, I mean, every quarter.
Okay, the FY22 financial report?
Okay, so I'll just, I won't spend much time on it. It's required each month. We give the board a financial report. This is a one-month financial report. I took a look at it. There's nothing out of the ordinary. The first month of the year, it's the month of July when a lot of people aren't working or getting paid. It's only 5.15% of the budget. So I don't think, I don't think we necessarily need to go through line by line what's there. All sort of costs that are typical for that one month. I will sort of pivot quickly to the, I did my final forecast for this past year. So it's pretty much done now. It's not necessarily a forecast. Still has to go through year-end close and audit, so there could be a few changes. But basically, we ended up, after we took the items that the board approved, and they're going through the escrow process in the next week or so with the Board of Aldermen. When that's fully complete, there will be, the excess funds after we took those out is about $1.4 million. Okay, so those funds are basically gone back to the, to the city coffers. And I won't speak now to what they're used for. I think I know what they're going to do, but let's, let the, let's let the Aldermen speak to that.
Thank you.
Yes, from a couple of people.
He must be happy because he dug himself a hole. Probably for me, the same thing. A couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, what's going to happen with the fuel cost if it keeps going up for first student?
It's, all the increased fuel is first student. There's no increase to us.
Okay, so it got built in even though where we were low, and it's rising so fast?
Yep. And when we negotiated this contract, they said, we'll just take, we'll worry about the fuel cost. So if it goes way up, they'll have less money in other areas. If it goes way down, they'll gain, but...
Just wanted to ask then. I had another question. Oh, what was it? Oh, I forgot. And we were also talking about, we're going to have to put on extra buses because of social distancing with the kids?
We don't have extra buses because we don't have extra drivers. We have what we have. My understanding of last night's motion was that we will do the social distancing where possible. And so on the buses, we'll do it where possible. But if there's, you know, there may be some students that may need to share a seat. Hopefully, they're siblings or something like that. But yeah, I mean, the number of drivers we have and the number of buses, that is, it's a severe driver shortage. To be honest with you, we're pretty lucky. There's some of the other towns that didn't continue to pay a portion of their transportation cost have lost a lot of those drivers because they either went and done, did different things or went other places. So we're hoping, like the terminal told us, they don't know until they bring them in. Occasionally, some people at the last minute drop out. But at this point, they think they've got enough bus drivers to do the runs that we have planned.
Super.
The city's lucky then because where I work, I mean, there's, there's no help. I mean, we're kind of doing double, triple duty now because nobody's working. Okay, I can't...
But school bus drivers have been a problem even before COVID-19.
Oh, yes, yes. We've struggled with the number of drivers for a long, long time. And part of it, too, is the training for it. It takes a long time to become a bus driver because you're going to go through, to get the license, it's probably at least a two-month process. So if you decided, I want to do it today, it'd probably take you two months till you got your license.
Just go through DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why. Okay, bless you. I had, I had a question. Okay, so we're going to make a motion on this. I'll make a motion to accept the FY22 July financial report.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the transfer report.
Okay, so just run through this quickly. The first transfer is Main Dunstable just moving from supplies to furniture and fixtures to purchase some classroom desks. Second one...
Ask a question on that.
Yes.
You know, I'm just going to broad. I find that we put all this money into the schools, and at the end of the year, they move it all around. And I kind of find it's funny that they didn't need anything during the year. So wouldn't furniture and fixtures be part of the operating budget to purchase versus going into the school that at the end of the year, 1200? I know it's a little bit of money, but when you look at it in other places, almost $1,300.
Well, this is actually this year. This is the new year. So keep in mind, they put their budget together in December. So last December, when they put this together, they said, okay. They didn't budget any money in there. We give them about $35,000 for the school. They're paying for that out of their allocation. When they put their budget together, they didn't put enough in to cover the furniture that they didn't know they were going to buy because it was seven months later. So it's just moving funds from one account to another within their own school budget. And if, and if you think that principals and secretaries are great at budgeting seven months in advance, they're not. That's not their skill set. They're not financial people. So this is not surprising at all, really. They take a look at what they spent last year. They budget that. And then if they have to change it, they do. So it's, it's not really surprising.
But this is the beginning of their budget season already.
Yeah, it's not the end of the year.
It's not the end of the year, and even then, to me, it's like a shell game. That's okay. Go on. Thank you.
All right. The second, the second one is the $40,000. That was a, that's just fixing the budget. There was, in, in the special ed department, this $40,000, which is for, what's it, for tutoring, was put in the wrong line. So this is just fixing that. That was an error with our old budget software that we're not going to have to use anymore since we have the new one. The next one is, okay, so the next one is, is also related to special ed. Special ed lost lots of staff over the past year and has continued to lose a few through the summer. So these are, what we're doing here is we're taking dollars that we budgeted in, in, in the labor and moving it to contracted services because we simply cannot find the people to fill the roles.
But what happens if we happen to find people and we've moved this out of our...
Then we'll, we'll move it, we'll transfer it back if we find somebody. So, but we've done this the last couple of years with a couple of people. This year, we may end up doing more of this. Two weeks ago, special ed was down 16 staff.
But what are we doing for, how does this affect our students with special ed?
Well, that's why we need to have the people in place. So we're putting a push on to get people in. They're making some hires. But these are specific positions that they felt they weren't going to be able to get a hire for in time, so we put a contracted service in. It's not, we're not committing to it for a whole year. We're just committing it to it sort of a month at a time. So if we do find somebody, then we'll drop the contracted service and hire the person.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is athletics, just moving money from repairs to rentals because their gymnastics, they, they have a new place, a rental for the gymnastics team. Next is Ledge Street. They're purchasing, they're taking it from supplies, and they're buying some Chromebook carts for all the Chromebooks that are around. The other one is, as I mentioned before, this is a psychologist that, that resigned. They haven't been able to fill those. And so they're moving money once again from labor to contracted services. And then the next one is, this was just a library subscription that wasn't in the budget because it used to be paid for by the state, and they don't pay for it anymore. So we wanted to keep it. It's only $3,900. So we moved the funds from instructional services. Then the last three or four are actually entries from last year. So they were June entries that were put into June. And you'll notice there, one is to cover legal costs. And we also had a special revenue fund, the facility rental, which had a negative amount. You can't close out the year with a negative amount in a special revenue. So we had to pay for it out of, out of our operating budget. And the reason that happened was we had collected money in advance, and then they couldn't use it, so we had to give it back to them. The next one, we moved money from electricity to pay for the, the two invoices that we had for the superintendent's search. And then the last two are both related to moving from heating gas to cover legal bills that came in at the end of the year.
That was $11,500 worth of legal bills that we had to pay off.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well...
Costing us money.
Legal is, legal was, I think, at the end of the year, it was well over $200,000. So hopefully, that's not going to continue because...
We're hoping so, too. That's a lot of money to pay lawyers.
It is.
It is. There's better things we can do with $200,000 than pay lawyers. Okay, I'm going to, we need a motion on this, right? To accept a transfer report. I'm going to make a motion to accept a transfer report for FY22.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes?
Mrs. Oden votes yes.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Donovan?
That is it for this evening.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oden, Mrs. Johnson votes yes?
Mrs. Oden votes yes.
And we're adjourned at exactly 8:00 PM. Thank you.